Okay. So, for tonight, I have nothing for the Ordinance Elections and Legislative Matters Committee.
Cancel.
Cancel.
Public Safety Emergency Management is canceled.
I'll call the Personnel and Human Service Committee to order at 7:03. Members, there are myself, Councilor Reynolds, and Councilor Blair. From the docket of July 17, 2018, I move to confirm the appointment of Courtney Wurcho to fill a three-year term of Superintendent of Water, term to expire.
Point of order, Madam Chair, Councilor Blair must recuse herself from this vote.
Okay, all right, thank you. Term to expire. Term to expire, February 2021.
Second.
Thank you. So this appointment came down to fill the Superintendent of Water. I was able to speak to the individual who retired, who had worked for the city for 30 years, Paul Kennedy, and he does think that this is a good fit. I spoke to Courtney, unfortunately, she's on vacation this week, so if she, if it does come forward, hopefully she can come out in August. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yes, I'm supporting this motion because I believe that Courtney is a very intelligent, highly skilled superintendent, a potential superintendent. But I remember a conversation I had with the Human Resource Department four months ago, when they were conducting a search to look for a superintendent. And I thought I remembered seeing in the job description a particular license that was required to be a Massachusetts Water Department Superintendent/Operator. Do you know whether or not that has been a criteria that has been met?
I can't speak to that. I do have her resume, and I can certainly look into that for the Committee of the Whole, if you'd like. But she does appear to meet qualifications. Everybody did receive her resume, so her licenses are a Grade 14 Massachusetts Drinking Water Treatment License and a Grade 4D Massachusetts Distribution License.
There you have it.
So she does have those two.
Thank you, thank you for that information, Council Holmes.
Council Cooper.
Thank you. I was told in my conversations with the mayor that she does have all the licenses required for the position.
Excellent.
Any other comments? All those in favor bringing it out of committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. And that is all the business tonight, and I look to adjourn.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Thank you. At 7:05. Thank you.
Transportation and traffic is canceled for this evening.
City property and claims has no business and is canceled this evening.
I'd like to call License Committee meeting at 7:06. It's myself, Council Jackson is not here, Ms. Poreka, Vice President Poreka.
Will you do my third?
Yes.
Okay, so from the docket of June 19, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the 2018 Class II Auto License application from Omar Halabi of 4 Newton Street in Fairhaven. DBA Better Auto, 473 Washington Street, for four display spaces and 10 customer parking spaces.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or anything? We had the, he was here at the public hearing, nobody spoke against him. All those in favor?
Aye.
From the docket of June 15, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the Class II License, amended license application for the New England Automax, 800 Washington Street, Attleboro, for 10 customer parking spaces and 100 display spaces.
Second.
And again, we just had the public hearing, everybody met pat. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions, just I thought that your comments the other night were really great, where you're like, okay, everybody else at home, pay attention, because this is how you get it done.
Yeah, and he actually called me after. He's really nice and cooperative, which is refreshing.
It is.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
From the docket of June 19, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the application for a one-day liquor license from the Friends of Capron Park for Saturday, October 6, 2018.
Second.
Anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's all I have for tonight. I'd like to adjourn at 7:08.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I would like to call Budget and Appropriations to order at 7:08. I have several motions tonight. First, from the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the following request of the mayor. In accordance with vote number 43, taken by your honorable body on June 19, 2018, I hereby request your honorable body to appropriate $179,820.98 from account 11241000-578350, Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations, to the following salary and wages accounts. $2,584.48 to account 11111000-51000, Department of Municipal Council Salary and Wages. $15,438.39 to account 1211000-511000, Department of Mayor Salary and Wages. $15,487.16 to account 11331000-511000, Department of Budget and Administration Salary and Wages. $7,733.44 to account 11351000-511000, Department of Auditor Accounting Salary and Wages. $6,584.75 to account 11411000-511000, Department of Assessor Salary and Wages. $8,301 to account 11451000-511000, Department of Treasurer Salary and Wages. $7,659.43 to account 11461000-511000, Department of City Collector Salary and Wages. $8,537.24 to account 11521000-511000, Department of Personnel Salary and Wages. $5,794 to account 11611000-511000, Department of City Clerk Salary and Wages. $2,569.84 to account 11621000-511000, Department of Elections Salary and Wages. $13,505.88 to account 11751000-511000, Department of Planning and Land Use Salary and Wages. $13,576.40 to account 12101000-511000, Department of Police Salary and Wages. $11,087.27 to account 12201000-511000, Department of Fire Salary and Wages. $3,428.62 to account 12401000-511000, Department of Protective Inspection Salary and Wages. $5,209.99 to account 12921000-511000, Department of Animal Control Salary and Wages. $5,773.32 to account 14201000-511000, Department of Public Works Salary and Wages. $13,379.45 to account 15101000-511000, Department of Health Salary and Wages. $12,178.58 to account 15411000-511000, Department of Council on Aging Salary and Wages. $2,948.63 to account 15431000-511000, Department of Veterans Salary and Wages. $8,452.1 cent to account 16101000-511000, Department of Library Salary and Wages. $5,947.46 to account 16301000-511000, Department of Recreation Salary and Wages. $3,643.64 to account 16501000-511000, Department of Park and Forestry Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thank you, Council Corvus.
From what I could tell, there was one Scrivener's error where you left off a 1 on the second line.
Not bad.
Second one down. Well done.
I'll take it.
Perhaps we should consult, okay, just kidding.
So, when we voted the salary table for the exempt classification plan, it was the vote we took in June. We took to do a 2% increase for 7-1 '17, 7-1 '18, and that came into effect on July 1, 2018. These transfers would cover the costs as those individual lines were not funded in the budget. As labor contracts continue to settle in this upcoming fiscal year, I would expect to see more transfers such as this. As, to date, really the only one that was settled in the budget was the police bargaining, so. Questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The next two are the similar in nature, and not as long. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $5,665, I'm sorry, $5,665.06 from account 61000-61000-578350, Water Enterprise Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations, to account 61000-511000, Water Enterprise Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thanks, Council Corvus, I really have.
Do we have?
Sorry.
Yes.
Do we have an issue with the way it's typed up here, or the way you read it?
There are Scrivener's errors, so I just read them correctly into record. My motions, I mean my comments, from the first motion, stand true on these, this, and the second one as well, not the third one. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes. From the docket of August 4th, August 14, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $13,225.32 from account 6000-578350, Waste Water Enterprise Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations, to account 6,000-511000, Waste Water Enterprise Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding the following. On June 26, 2018, your honorable body voted to appropriate $110,000 from 8505-599000 E-Rate Stabilization Fund Other Financing Uses to fund 2701-499000 E-Rate IT Fund Other School Funding Sources in order to engineer, build, and utilize a Wi-Fi network that will be installed at the high school. Included in the communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Mark Fattato, was a request to appropriate an additional $70,000 that was inadvertently omitted. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to appropriate $70,000 from account 8505-599000 E-Rate Stabilization Fund Other Financing Uses to fund 2701-499000 E-Rate IT Fund Other Financing Sources.
Second.
Thank you, Council Corvus. I think, so, we're asking to use approximately $110,000 for the purchase of 450 Chromebooks as testing across an entire class, approximately 450 students. The remaining $70,000 will be used for the engineering and construction of the network. Both of those purchases will be made off the state contract. So, as I were going around along, I just wanted to really educate everyone a little bit on what the E-Rate is, because we've seen this a couple times, and this is a wonderful program. So, the E-Rate money is collected from the telecommunications bills that we sent, and then the telecommunications sends it to the FCC, where they have a program to redistribute the money to public education institutions and libraries, such as Attleboro Public Schools. And it's for, really, internet access and the network, as we're using some of these for Chromebooks. Any money the cities and school departments spend on certain E-Rate eligible items is eligible for reimbursement. So, the funds are actually those reimbursements that come in to the E-Rate stabilization, which I think we just enacted, I want to say, in February. So, this is an amazing program, it's just how the, another example of good partnerships, good grants, how it all comes back to really help the schools, so. Any other questions, Vice President Poreka?
Thank you. So, I think this is terrific, it is, I'm glad you took a moment to kind of explain that, because I've had people ask me, like, if we're, you know, we're building a new high school, we're self-funding the Wi-Fi, I mean, everyone, nobody can argue that we need Wi-Fi service in the high school. However, to know that this isn't something that's strictly coming under the budget to be able to fund that is terrific. I think previously, when we created the E-Rate, and what this was for, I was singing to the high, you know, to the high heavens, like, thank you, finally. And I will finally say that I did attend the School Building Commission meeting last night, and got a sneak preview of the inside of the school, and every single classroom in the future will have Wi-Fi built into each individual classroom. So, when that information comes out, I had some concerns that people were like, we just spent all this money on IT to put in, and now we're going to tear the building down, so, you know, it isn't a budgetary allotment, so, people should be more comfortable with it.
But there's also facets of the network that will be able to carry over into the new school, too, which is wonderful as well.
Right, thank you.
Council Holmes?
That was my, that's what I remember you saying.
That's your mind.
See?
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion passes. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor regarding a communication from Chief Assessor Stanley Nassowitz regarding funds for the necessary work to complete the fiscal year 2019, maintenance and interim adjustment of real property. Therefore, I, let's see, therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to transfer $5,500 from account 11241000-5783000, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account 1411000-595010, Assessors' Reevaluation. Upon approval, the available balance and reserve fund for transfer will be $394,500.
Second.
Thank you, Council Conti.
Jay, just see, you transposed a number. It was 114, you said 141.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, no worries.
Didn't have it be appropriate.
You go a little quick sometimes. All right. Just want to take a second, read the letter from Stan that came down on Tuesday night. "On behalf of the Board of Assessors, I hereby request the funds in the amount of $5,500 be appropriated for the purpose of funding the cost of the work necessary to complete the fiscal year 2019, maintenance interim adjustment of real property. The amount is needed in addition to the $15,000 already included in the budget. The total price of the contract is $20,500. The Board would like to contract the services of Northeast Revaluation Group, LLC, as soon as possible in order for them to complete by the deadline of October 1, 2018." So you can see, we're up against a deadline. These are funds necessary for the assessors' office to perform their duties. Questions, thoughts, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And I would move for adjournment at 7:21.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at 7:21.
The Committee for Doning of Land Use is canceled for tonight.
The Committee for Capital Improvement and City Development, I just have one announcement that on September 11, the Attleboro Redevelopment Authority will be addressing the committee. And so I've made a request that they're up first for September 11. They are going to make a presentation on where the, where their status is, where they've, what they've accomplished, and what they have coming up in the future. And as you know, there's going to be a closing on the sports complex in October, which is a big financial impact, and so they are going to reveal to the council what they've learned about the expense to remediate the hazardous waste material that's in the Woodward Park. So they've gotten estimates on the costs, it's going to require a bond, it's going to be an expensive earth removal project to remediate that land. So, I've asked them to come in with the engineering firm to make a presentation on September 11, and so we have an opportunity for all of us to ask all the questions in front of everybody that's an authority right there that night, and hopefully get a lot accomplished. And that's all I have for Capital Improvement and City Development, so I'll adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Called it to order.
I call the Committee meeting for Public Works to order at 7:23. I have one, two, three, four motions in front of the committee this evening. It's myself, Ms. Dolan, and President Cooper. "From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to accept a grant of easement from Massachusetts Electric Company for a property located at 80 County Street owned by Cumberland Farms Incorporated with a permanent easement on the premises to the city of Attleboro. This proposed easement, which is located within the city's permanent easement, is needed to provide electrical service for the Ten Mile River Path lighting. Therefore, I respectfully request that your honorable body accept this grant of easement as shown on sketch entitled National Grid Sketch to Accompany Easement for Secondary Handhole, 80 County Street, Attleboro, Mass., dated 6/18/18, designer M.S.E.W.R. 26235820."
Second.
So, Kate regrets that she couldn't be here this evening. She did a girl a solid, and did all the work, and left me all the notes, so I was happy about that. So, this easement is pretty straightforward, we all got a copy of the easement documents as well as the map, we're all aware of the Ten Mile River, what do we call it?
Cantilevered Walkway.
The Cantilevered Walkway. They've been working diligently on that, and so we just need this space from Cumberland Farms to accommodate the electrical service, so that they will be able to tie into the lighting at Riverfront Drive, which is important, because in the past week, that big Cantilevered Walkway was tagged by vandals. So, it already has graffiti on it, so once we get that all lit up, hopefully that will deter some of that behavior back there. Any questions or concerns? I move for a vote, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. My apologies, President Cooper.
So, with regard to the recent vandalism, I have a conversation with the mayor about it, and there's also...
it, and there's also, I anticipate a funding request for some security cameras there as well.
I also took it upon myself to have a conversation, not with the mayor, but with Gary Oragian. And I don't know when you had your conversation with him, and what transpired between the two of them, but when I did speak to Mr. Oragian, he felt that there would be enough money that has been set aside that should be able to cover the emergency cameras in the current bond that we have available.
Hope so.
So, and any corrections or cleaning up of said graffiti? They have not turned, oh, this particular, the Cantilevered Walkway is not owned by the city of Attleboro yet. It won't be turned over to us until the middle of October, which is what is expected. So, normally, the process, if we own it, we'd have to go through the insurance company, but currently, where we don't own it, it would be up to the contractor to have that assessed to be managed. Sound right? All right. Again, any questions or concerns? And can we not do that, people of the city of Attleboro? Can we be nice about those kinds of things? This is the reason why we don't have nice things. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. From the docket of August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding a communication from Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Tyler, for funds in previous year salaries that are required to be paid to an employee who is owed a step increase. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer two hundred and forty-four dollars, thirty-two cents from account one one two four one zero 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 five seven eight three zero zero, citywide reserve fund for transfer, to account one four two zero one zero 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 five one four zero five zero, Public Works, previous year salaries.
Second.
Thank you. My minute's. No. So, when I spoke to Kate earlier today, the pub, one of the, it's this one. So, if you address your backup documentation, this particular employee was owed their step increase, and it was owed salary and overtime for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Any questions or concerns? I move for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. From the docket of August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding a request from Solid Waste Administrator Jessica Signarella for your approval to pay five dollars and eighty-nine cents from prior year salaries for an employee who worked overtime at the Compost Center. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt from account two six zero four five one four zero five zero. There are no, no transfer of funds needed to pay the employee, as there is sufficient funding in fund two six oh four.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. It's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Excuse me. And finally, from the docket of August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding Solid Waste Administrator Jessica Signarella's communication for your approval to pay previous year's bills in the amount of seventy-five dollars from account two two one one five four six zero four zero compost recycling bins, and four hundred and fifty dollars from account two two one RDP recycling, recycling dash recycling bins, for an overlooked recycling toter invoice from fiscal year two thousand eighteen. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There's no transfer of funds needed to pay these bills, as there is sufficient funding in fund two two one one and fund two two one one RDP.
Second.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Not specifically about this, but we did have some trash-related questions that were submitted to the Health Department, to the administration, that I received through Councilor Delicio, that came initiated from Councilor Cobus, but I think we've all heard stories about trash, and we asked for clarification for the department after it come down. We received the email. All of my questions weren't answered in that, so I will be making a formal request per the charter of the department head to appear before this municipal council in August. So, I will be sending that notice today or tomorrow, and make the formal request as afforded through the charter of the department head to appear before this body to answer any questions that we all may have as a collective body regarding what's going on with our trash and recycling. I did, as I said, I did have a very productive meeting with the mayor after his meeting with Waste Management, and I, I'm sorry if I got my notes at home on it, but if I remember correctly, don't quote me, but I think I got the gist. Essentially, we are putting more trash in our recyclables than the contract allows. I want to say the contract said up to ten percent we can allow miscellaneous trash. Somebody inadvertently throws styrofoam in ten percent of the time, that, that, that would be okay per our contract, but we're up to close to thirty percent waste in our recycle bins, which is causing the issue, and the plastic shopping bags is causing the majority of the issue for Waste Management. But I will make that formal request. Four or five of you have come to me asking about it, and so that's what the update is. Thank you.
Thank you, President Cooper. Any other questions or concerns? I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That concludes the business for this committee at this time. I call for an adjournment at seven thirty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned.
If I could have your attention, I must call the Committee for City Development and Capital Improvements to order, because I've uncovered an error that we need to rectify tonight. So, it is six thirty-three?
Seven.
Seven thirty-three. Sitting on the committee is Councilor Hall and Doleman. And the motion I have to bring for you tonight is from the docket of August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding the Community Development Block Grant for Program Year two thousand eighteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, from the Recreation Director for the Youth Center Program, in the amount of approximately ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And in accordance with Chapter One, Section Twelve, the advised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, the mayor hereby requests your honorable body to approve the expenditure during fiscal year nineteen of this Community Development Block Grant, and also approve any future grants amended.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dolan. So, I thought that we did this in June, but we couldn't have, because it was in the mayor's communication to the council on July seventeen. So, somehow it didn't make it into my minutes, and of course, when you just get the minutes, when you walk in the door at quarter to seven, you don't have time to look at them. So, the motion's in order. That's the most important thing. The second thing is that this is a routine item. We've already voted the approval of the Community Development Block Grant funds, and that was this money to, to give to the Recreation Department, but we need to have this vote for them to expend the money. And that concludes my comments. Do you have any questions or concerns? All in favors?
Aye.
All opposed? None. The motion passed unanimously, and that concludes the business that the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee has to bring before you this evening. I'll adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. All in favor?
Aye.
I declare the Capital Improvements City Development Committee adjourned at seven thirty-six.
You canceled. So, we're all set, right? It's so easy getting all the paperwork done for an entire meeting. Should, should this be our bathroom? Maybe not. Hopefully, because it makes for a little chat.
Public work. Do I have capital improvement?
I don't have anything.
For chicken?
Oh, sorry. Oh, got it.
Zoney and Landry doesn't have any transportation. Except for it's a piece of paper. I did.
Yeah, we can weigh that, thank you.
Licenses. Personnel, human service.
Can I close your ear as we mean for a second, ma'am?
Yes. And then ordinances, you don't have.
I did will down like, I did will.
You've done?
No, cute.
Not again. Not again, somebody stole it. I know, but I don't know what. No, I can use my. Call the council to order at 7:42 PM. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote and we will begin with Counselor Blair.
Counselor Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
And Mr. Corvus.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the records of May 15, 2018.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in, um, can you roll call vote? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion passes. These microphones are driving me crazy tonight. Are they driving anybody else crazy? Because I'm not going to be, James, I'm not going to be able to take this all night. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 19, 2018.
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Counselor Conti.
Mr. President, I found one scrupulous error. At the point in the minutes when I was declaring that I was not going to be able to vote due to this list. She has the incorrect address for the country club, she has 4 McCann Street, it's 104 McCann Street. Just that one little change and we're good.
Perfect, we'll incorporate that, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Delicio.
Jessica, I mean, I think it's important to recognize Virginia and the job she's done getting these minutes ready because these minutes are essential to final, to actually really start the ball moving for the purchase of Highland. So I think kudos are due to Virginia.
Yes, absolutely, it was a long meeting and the request was that minutes are necessary to send to bond. So it was quick.
If I can chime in also, Mr. President, on the merits of Virginia's effort, she's doing a fabulous job. The pace of this council is like I've never seen at this time of the year. And I've been on this council for nine years. In addition to having the fireworks activity in that office causes a tremendous volume of work during the summertime. And, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm disappointed in her performance, I'm not. I'm happy that I was, you know, able to get through all the material as quickly as we can get through it. And, and I have absolutely no criticisms whatsoever for the performance of the administrative assistant. I think she's doing a great job and I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, any, any other comments about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. At this time, we will go into committee of the whole. Actually, because there's no communication from the mayor, there's no public hearings. No, I entertain a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, is there anyone here to address the council on any matter of city business?
Thank you, if I could pass this. Good evening, members of the council, my name's Bill Bowles, 65 Norgate Road in beautiful Attleboro. I was hoping to get this letter that I'm passing around formally into the clerk so it would be read, but I didn't make it in the timeframe, so I have, I'll read the, read the letter. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about the benefits of what I'm proposing. To all councilors, there's been a significant amount of discussion recently regarding recycling and whether the citizens are properly recycling. The mayor suggested that many residents are putting items in blue recycling containers that don't belong there. And there is a concern that the items will be rejected, end up as part of the trash, the non-recycling items, that would end up increasing tonnage, thus causing an increase to the trash fee. I think there is a much bigger problem regarding the trash rate that I'm hoping the council will take action on. The first one is there are many city depart, city government sites such as city halls, schools, and all city departments, and I would add including the various recreational fields, that have trash dumpsters but no recycling container, which means that the recycling are items that, that could be recycled, they're put into the trash dumpsters. And the same scenario exists for many of our complex, condo complexes around the city. And therefore, those folks are paying higher trash rates than they need to because there's no recycling opportunity for them. So I'm asking the city council to create an ordinance that requires a suitable sized recycling container at all dumpsters at city government locations and condo complexes. Additionally, the tonnage at the city government locations should be estimated and excluded from the tonnage that is used to compute the trash rates for the residents, similar to how we do water and sewer that's used by the city and not charged to the residents. The city should pay for the trash it generates. I work in Boston, I take the South Station every, I take the commuter rail to the South Station every day and I walk down Summer Street to my office in downtown Crossing. And in there I pass probably 15 trash containers. And every one of them we see, this is for the trash and this is for the recycling. So we've been talking a lot about trying to do a better job of recycling. And I believe the council is going to entertain some discussion on the whole issue of what's legitimate in, in the recycling containers and what's not. But that's only one component of our, of our trash rate. When I was on the city council, computing the trash rate was no great work of science. You added up all the tonnage, you figured out how much money the tonnage costs. And then you look at the, when I was the council, it was about 13,500 households. And then you computed your trash rate to be able to cover the costs of the trash. So just for the, just for the sake of argument, let's just say that we had, I don't know, 30 dumpsters around the city locations. And one could compute the average tonnage associated with those 30 dumpsters. You could, when you're then looking at setting the rates for the individual residents, the tonnage associated with those, with that, with that should be excluded from the computation of the rate. So that the city should pay for the trash that's on the city locations. Just like the city departments pay for the water, the city departments pay for the sewer and so forth. I think it's, you know, we all want to be good stewards of the environment. And I think this makes sense from a number of, from a number of aspects. But the biggest one, I think, that could contribute to improving things is, is at least practice what we preach. And in terms of if we're telling residents, you should do this with recycling. As the, as the city, we should be practicing what we preach and put recycling containers in there and spell out the rules. I don't know what's going on with the recycling, but I think Mr. Blair, Counsel Blair was on the council with me at the time. And he's probably the only one, but there was these, the, we called them the moony years where we were introducing this, this concept of doing more recycling. And we kept adding stuff to the, to the recycling bins. And his argument, which was a valid one, is if you, if you recycle more, then your trash is going to be less. So they, that's going to obviously benefit your, your trash rate. And it seems like something has happened recently. And I don't know what it is, and that's why I think it's important that the council get to the bottom of it. But something has happened because things that, that 10 years ago, I know that we could recycle, things like cereal boxes or other things, things that, cardboard. There seems to be excuses coming out on the mayor's Facebook page about that the citizens are, are not recycling, are recycling things that they shouldn't be. Now, I don't know, maybe he's right, maybe he's, he's not right. But it's not waste systems that controls our destiny, it's us. Waste Systems is just a vendor of, of the city. So I think we need to get a handle on that. But this proposal that I'm making here this evening, quite frankly, I think that's a no brainer. Cities all over the Commonwealth are separating their recyclables from their trash. So I'm hoping that this matter would be assigned to a committee and that, that the council would move to act on this. If, I don't know, I might tell you how to do your job, but maybe I'll just make a comment. If you're told that this is something that's not under the purview of the council because it, it gets going to cost money to implement a tool that we've, that I've used or others councils have used in the past in order to, to get that is to do a non-binding, what do we call it?
Memorandum of agreement? Memorandum of agreement?
Nope.
Doubt that one?
Pardon?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Ah, resolution.
There you go.
That's when you get old. Do a resolution asking the administration to, to contain these things. But I think that something as ancillary as a recycling container does not meet the threshold of something that would be considered raising, raising money. And I think the council would be well within its rules to establish an ordinance to, to do this. And I think if we're serious about recycling, we should do that. And if we're serious, and if indeed, as the mayor is talking about our trash rates going up, this alone is going to reduce the impact of our trash rates because we're going to see less trash in there.
Mr. President Perica.
Thank you, President Cooper. Bill, thanks for coming in tonight, always a pleasure to see you. So I'm, I'm, again, I'm grateful for the upgrade, update that President Cooper gave us and the request that Mr. Delicio and President Cooper making to have the Health Department come down to give us an update. I've just, when I was looking at your letter, I think you'll be happy to know that if you go into the council, you know, council office back behind you, you'll see a regular trash barrel and recycling bins. And that's how it is all through City Hall here. So we do when John Mamoely is doing his daily cleaning and emptying trash. He has one bat, one for regular trash and one for recycling. So it is something that does take place specifically here at City Hall.
There are, there are places in City Hall is one that does it and I don't dis, I don't dispute that. I'm really talking about the, the dumpsters that are, the standalone dumpsters that you see outside.
Sure, but you did reference City Hall in your letter. And the other part of it too is, is that I, I, most, it is my, it has been my experience that the majority of condo complexes and apartment complexes have private trash fund, private trash service. So that isn't anything that would necessarily come into play to adjust our, the city's trash rate if we, if we made requirements on them because we kind of can't.
No, I wasn't referring to the city trash rate. What I was referring to is the trash that, that, that the condo owners are paying. For example, Mr. Delicio lives in a condo complex. And so in order to be certain that I was certain of what I was talking about, I took a ride by. And you look at the dumpsters. So when he pays his condo fee or other condo associations are paying their condo fee, they're paying a private trash collector.
Right.
To, to take away that trash. And their condo fees are predicated on the amount of trash that gets taken away. So instead of them paying for 100% of that trash in the dumpster, if you had a recycling bin there, you might only be paying for 80% of it. And condo associations would probably be very happy because that component of their bill would be less. So I wasn't referring to the city when I was talking about condo. But the city certainly has the authority and I would, or they certainly has the authority to establish guidelines regarding trash. You, you have guide, you have, you have auditors right now that dictate how my trash at 65 Norgate Road is supposed to be done, right? Or recycled in and trash can. You could certainly do that same thing at condo complexes.
I would, I would have to.
So we're not having that.
So we're not having that discussion, thank you for your clarification.
Just a point of information, Bill, good to see you as always. I appreciate the thought you put into this as a member of the board that, of the condo you alluded to. Not to get into the details of the contract, but that's not, our contract's based on something different. And we do have a recycling dumpster right next to the trash dumpster. So, and I think you're seeing that more and more, but I think that you're on the right track here, I just wanted to.
If you have one right next to it, I didn't see it because I went and looked, but that doesn't mean I would, I missed it.
It's part of my son's chores.
But in any.
15 minutes of video games, guy, you go take the cereal boxes out.
Okay, but, but in that case then, you, then your complex certainly wouldn't mind an ordinance that made that a requirement.
Counselor Don.
So I agree with Counsel Delicio as far as being on the right track. And, and I know what you're saying, when you're in Boston and when you're, when you're in public places, you see the trash and then you see the recycling right next to it, which is obviously something that everybody should do. But some, something is happening because when I, I, I asked people when I was over their house about their trash. Anyway, North Attleboro is going through the same thing as far as them, them coming down on their citizens. Like now when you have a pizza box, you can throw away and recycle the top, but you can't throw away the, or recycle the bottom, excuse me, you can't recycle it if it has grease on it. That never used to be in the rules before. So she was ripping up the top, putting it recycling and throwing the other one in the trash. So, and I have a friend in Mansfield that they're going through the same thing. So something has changed, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's, you know, waste management or, or just all the companies doing, coming down hard on people. I'm not sure exactly what everybody's doing wrong, but I don't think it's just us. And I don't think it's a farce by any means, but.
Would obviously have to be investigated, but it smells an awful lot like waste management has been the people that pick up our trash for a long, long time. And it, it, as somebody who audits vendors, it kind of looks, looks like they might be taking some liberties that maybe some other haulers don't, don't do. So I, you know, I think it's, it's something that just needs to be investigated by the administration. But we shouldn't be putting things in the recycling that don't belong there. But when I hear the explanations, I hear waste management will fine us. Our waste management is not accepting of, of this. Well, let's, let's find out if we're getting the best bang for the buck here because there were, the rules, I don't know, what's recyclable, I don't think should have changed over the last 10 years or so. But if it's just a question of we were always violating it and now they're, they're thinking that the threshold's gone too high, that 30% I'm hearing about, that's, that's one thing. But I, I think that there's not a lot of concrete knowledge about the real reasons for what's going on. That's what's got, that's what's got residents so concerned because they're saying, we've been doing this for years. And somehow, all of a sudden now, we're being urged to buy more plastic bags. And the, and the rationale to buy more plastic bags is it's going to reduce our trash rate, but it's going to, quite the opposite. If you buy more trash bags, that's to put trash in, it's going to increase the tonnage and increase our trash rates. So something's just not making sense. And I think we need to get to the handle, to the bottom of it. There's two issues. One of the issues is what should go into the recycling. But the purpose of this letter is to say, separate from that, let's, let's put, well, let's make it a requirement that our trash dumpsters have recycling, suitable sized recycling containers next to them because that's going to ultimately lower the, it's going to, and if, if the city identifies the tonnage that's not part of the residential tax rate, then the amount that the city is going to pay is going to be less because you're going to have less trash.
Counselor Reynolds, do you have a comment?
So I was just going to say, I mean, I think, you know, you see this all over is that the waste management companies are not getting paid as much anymore for certain of the recyclables. They're not being accepted anymore overseas, so that's why it's changing. You know, they, they don't want to collect things that they're not getting any money for. And the cleaning process of these recyclings have increased as well. So that's part of what the, I don't know if you'd call it a problem, it's a fact of life. Nobody wants to collect and then not make the money they used to be making. So the recycle firms are not making the kind of money they once made. So they want you to trash, they'll make the money on the trash instead, on the tonnage on the trash. So I guess, you know, it's a catch 22 and, and maybe we do look at the current guidelines and try to refresh them. But it's a, it's a system that's way beyond anything we just can control because it's, it's due to the cost.
And don't forget the concept of competition.
Yeah, true.
Counselor Blair.
Bill, I don't know, you were sitting back there for quite a while. I hope you heard Mr. Cooper. He said we were going to have the Health Department come down, going to discuss the trash. I would suggest that you come to that meeting and listen, inform some opinions. We sit here with all of our own opinions and ifs and ands and buts. I think Mr. Cooper did a great job, evidently you weren't listening, but he's knowing exactly what you suggest. So evidently, he's a lot farther ahead than you were. So he's doing that. And as far as condominiums are concerned and multifamily homes that have trash containers out back, does not affect the city trash rate. They pay. They pay a contract. When I was in business, I paid a contract fee with that container. And they took into consideration what was in it. That's what you pay for.
I didn't say the city was paying.
Whoa, whoa. You're not here running private business, Bill. And we don't have any right in running private business. They want to pay more to have their trash taken away because it's more convenient for them, so be it. A smart condo complex is looking to save money, they'll put that recycler out there. But that's not up to this council, Bill.
Well, if the council, if that's the view of the council, then don't do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We will, you, you, you're going to submit this formally through the clerk's office? Is that your intent?
Mr. Weather said.
Oh, you got one. Okay. So that will come through the process and we'll assign it to a committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Is there anyone else here to address the city, the city on any city business? I entertain a motion to arise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are moving right along to committee reports, and we will start with Counsel Blair.
I have no business for my committee tonight, but I would like to mention, and the people at home, we had a congressman that served for 10 years diligently, with great respect, and served this city well, Mr. Carley, Bill Carley. He was also, worked for Stop Automotive, and I'm probably the only one in the room to remember Stop Automotive, maybe Mr. Blue. But Bill Carley was from the South area, I'm not sure Ward 1 or Ward 2, but he was an advocate for small businesses and the good of this city. He served amicably for 10 years, you know, way back when it was a little different. But he passed away at the age of 90, and I think a moment of silence for that gentleman would be greatly appreciated by his family.
Sure. Okay.
Have a moment of silence.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no business.
Thank you.
Counsel Blair.
Reporting for Public Works for this evening, I have four motions. Again, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Jackson, who prepared all, she did all the things that she would do before she was unable to attend this evening, so I appreciate that. It made my job, doing her job, a little easier. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to accept a grant of easement from Massachusetts Electric Company for property located at 80 County Street owned by Cumberland Farms Incorporated with a permanent easement on the premises to the city of Attleboro. This proposed easement, which is located within the city's permanent easement, is needed to provide electrical service for the 10-mile river path lighting. Therefore, I respectfully request that your honorable body accept this grant of easement as shown on a sketch entitled "National Grid: Sketch to Accompany Easement for Secondary Handhole, 80 County Street, Attleboro, Mass., dated 6/18/18," designer MSCWR 26235820.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Counsel Perica.
I don't think I need to add any comments. We just spent about a few moments ago.
Thank you. This requires a majority roll call vote, and the roll call will begin with Counsel Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding communication from Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Tyler, for funds in previous year salaries that are required to be paid to an employee who is owed a step increase. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to transfer $244.32 from account 11241000578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account Public Works, previous year salaries.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order.
No comment.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding a quest, a request from Solid Waste Administrator Jessica Singarilla for your approval to pay $5.89 from prior year salaries for an employee who worked overtime at the Compost Center. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt from account 2604514050. There's no transfer of funds needed to pay that employee as there is sufficient funding in Fund 2604.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any comments?
No comments.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote will begin with Counsel Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, President Cooper. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding Solid Waste Administrator Jessica Singarilla's communication for your approval to pay previous year's bills in the amount of $75 from account compost recycling bins and $450 from account recycling, recycling bins for an overlooked recycling toter invoice from FY 2018. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay these bills as there is sufficient funding in Fund 2211 and Fund 2211 RDP.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order.
No comments.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote is required, and we'll start with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Cobus.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business for Public Works for this evening, and I confer a committee meeting at the next appropriate time next month.
Great, thank you, Counsel Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for Kaplan-Bruinsen City Development Committee from the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding the community development block grant for program year 2018 fiscal year 2019 from the Recreation Director for the Used Center Program in the amount of approximately $10,800. That in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances, the city of Attleboro, the mayor hereby requests your honorable body to approve the expenditures during fiscal year 2019 of this community development block grant and also approve any future grant amendments.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Counsel Conti.
I have nothing additional to say. This is a routine measure. We vote on it every year, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote. We'll begin with Counsel Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the business that the Kaplan-Bruinsen City Development Committee has to bring before the council this evening. We look forward to our committee meeting next month.
Thank you, Counsel Cobus.
Nothing for zoning and land use, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
There's no business for Traffic and Transportation Committee at this time.
I would like, I didn't get a chance to say this because I keep my committee meeting. And it would be my request that my committee and everybody, make sure you read and digest the proposed ordinance for Beagle Club Road. We will be having, you know, discussions with regards to that. So I would love to hear any of your feedback. Send it to Virginia. Virginia can send it to me. If you have any questions, concerns, problems, want to add something, take something out, anything, please send it to Virginia. She will send it to me, and we will take it up in September. And that, I have no business and call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
Counsel Delicio.
Thank you, President Cooper. Reporting for Budget and Appropriations from the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the following request of the mayor. In accordance with vote number 43 taken by your honorable body on June 19, 2018, I hereby request your honorable body to appropriate $179,820.98 from account Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations to the following salaries and wages accounts. I would request a waiving of the reading.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No comments. We discussed this about an hour ago.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $13,225.32 from account Waste Water Enterprise Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations to account Waste Water Enterprise Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Counsel Delicio.
No comments. We just discussed this earlier.
Great, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counsel Hall. Did you have a question? I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor to transfer $13,225.32 from account Waste Water Enterprise Reserve Fund for Labor Negotiations to account Waste Water Enterprise Salary and Wages.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Any questions or comments?
No comments.
Thank you. A roll call vote, any questions or comments? This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding the following. On June 26, 2018, your honorable body voted to appropriate $110,000 from E-Rate Stabilization Fund, other financing sources, to fund E-Rate IT, other financing sources, in order to engineer, build, and utilize a Wi-Fi network that will be installed at the high school, including the communication from the Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Mark Fertato, was the request to appropriate an additional $70,000 that was inadvertently admitted. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to appropriate $70,000 from E-Rate Stabilization Fund, other financing uses, to E-Rate IT, other financing sources.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just with this one, the $110,000 is going for the Chromebooks for 450 students, where the $70,000 is just going to go for the network and infrastructure, where components will be able to be carried forward to the new school.
Great, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote, and we'll start with Counsel Hall.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
And finally, from the docket of August 14, 2018, I move to approve the request of the mayor regarding a communication from Chief Assessor Stanley Nafalowicz regarding, regarding funds for the work necessary to complete the fiscal year 2019 maintenance and interim adjustment of real property. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $5,500 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Assessor's Revaluation upon the approval, upon approval, sorry, the available balance in the Reserve Fund for Transfer will be $394,500.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote, and we'll start with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Cobus.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Pariqa.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you, and that is all the business for Budget and Appropriations and we'd like to call for a committee meeting next month at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Don.
Reporting for License Committee, I entertain a motion, excuse me, from the docket of June 19th, 2018, I entertain a motion to approve the 2018 Class II Auto License Application from Omar Halabi of 4 Newton Street in Fairhaven, Mass., DBA Better Auto at 473 Washington Street for 4 display parking spaces and 10 customer parking spaces.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order.
No comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? This requires a voice vote.